Okay. All right. The overlay recommendations.
I saw the first and second. Did we have a vote?
Oh, well, maybe. All right. We have a first and a second on the approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And your vote is in there as well?
Yes.
Just to make sure we have form. Thank you. And there are no overlay recommendations this month.
Okay. All right. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda will be voted on a single vote. We will not go over each and every issue unless there's someone in the audience that would like to withdraw any of the items from the consent agenda. So if we'll present.
There are several items on the consent agenda. The first is 1510 Ordway Place, application for new construction of an outbuilding and a setback determination. 622 Fatherland Street, construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit and a setback determination. 1407 Holly Street, new construction of an addition. 1825 Fourth Avenue North, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding and the setback determinations for the outbuilding. 1720 Fifth Avenue North, application for new construction and also that one, it's not written on there, but does also need a setback determination. 1515 Sixteenth Avenue South, new construction of an addition. 1515 Elmwood, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding. 2402 Belmont Boulevard, new construction, addition and outbuilding. Twenty...I think that's...sorry, the address is wrong in there. It's 503 Coffee Street, application for new construction of an addition and an outbuilding. And that is it for the consent agenda. Staff finds that these items meet their respective design guidelines and recommend approval with the staff recommendations that are outlined in the respective...
Is there anyone that would like to pull any items off the consent agenda in here at full presentation? Okay. Let me...before we vote on the consent agenda, the appeal of the decision for the Historic Zoning Commission and the process that you will go through pursuant to the provision of the section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Law. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County of a statutory writ of cer...
Certiorari.
Certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decisions of the Historic Zoning Commission. We will open this to public hearing. If there's no other withdrawals, we will close the public hearing. And do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is adopted. All right. We will move...we have no previously deferred items. We will move on to our new items for the day. I said I'll share.
Are you having trouble with your computer or screen? No?
First case today is at 122nd Avenue South in the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. This is an application to construct a six-story building on the vacant lot. The new building will have three main components. The first story will have a pedestrian scaled composition with stone bulkheads and pilasters, wide window bays with storefront proportions and transoms, and two clearly defined entrances. The first-story cornice would be an ephist type of material, which is not appropriate under the Broadway Design Guidelines, but otherwise this level will be primarily stone, glass, and aluminum storefront as well. The second component above that will be four stories of brick. It's more utilitarian in design with pilasters and window patterns continuing the rhythm of the first story, carrying that upwards. The uppermost story will be a cap with details and materials repeating those of the first story. Because the details of an upper story are less visible, staff finds that the ephist material will not have the impact on the character of the district that the first story does. So with the exception of ephist being replaced with stone on the first story, staff finds that the composition of the proposal is consistent with the commercial architecture of the downtown lower Broadway area. The story, as I said, will be six stories tall. The plans say five, but you'll see, counting the floor plans there, counting the windows, it's actually six stories. And we'll have...the cornice level will be 88 feet tall...or 88 feet above the sidewalk to that upper cornice level. This is 40 feet taller than a four-story building to the right. Outline there. And 58 feet taller than a two-story building to the left. Though the architecture of the building is appropriate, this height difference is not compatible with the adjacent historic buildings. And the severe contrast, staff finds, does not meet the guidelines for the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The published recommendations, which you all have copies of, go into further detail. So rather than repeat all that, I'll just move on to the summary. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill at 122nd Avenue South with the conditions that the height of the building be reduced by one story, that the first-story storefront and cornice material is a traditional masonry, not the textured acrylic or ephist finish material, and that staff approves any final material selections and windows and doors. With those conditions, staff finds that this project meets the design guidelines for infill construction in the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. I have the recommendation if you have any questions, and there is an applicant here as well.
All right. Do you all have any questions? Does staff have any other public hearing? Soon done? Open the public hearing, and if you all will come forward, give your name and your address. And if you can limit your presentations to three minutes and...10. 10 minutes?
Hello, I'm Mark Robyn, the architect of the project. First, I want to talk about the ephist. The bottom of the first-story cornice is 18 feet above the sidewalk, not within close scrutiny of the pedestrians. Since limestone is a heavy material from a bygone era and is energy-intensive to harvest, shape, and transport and be supported by today's building systems, a modern material design as a substitute for limestone has been proposed. It consists of natural minerals blended into an integral colored and textured finish with better hyperphobic properties. It is designed as a substitute for a traditional limestone. It provides a durable and unique finish option on concrete, brick, block, or stucco, along with being associated as a drive-it finish system. But it is not the standard drive-it synthetic stucco system that was available at the time of the writing of the code. It's a more modern substitute that I've been told had been previously accepted by the Historic Commission. Perhaps it was called arcus stone, another similar product, and I'm using the wrong name here, but whatever. Hopefully, that would be...there is a system similar that you'd be familiar with that would be acceptable. Otherwise, due to the weight of the stone, its difficulty of building support, energy and financial cost to harvest, shape, and transport, metal would be a more acceptable substitute for us than stone. As to the height of the building, we reduced to five stories. The district does not have a consistent cornice line nor a required build-to line. Instead, there's a diversity of heights and cornice lines that give the district its unique character. Its rhythm is derived by the seeming randomness of the stepping up and down of its massing. However, there has been a historic trend that the remaining shorter buildings are those built earliest, so later buildings due to the evolution of the district are taller than those that were the earliest. The staff concern lies with the neighboring low building, which was originally designed and built as a carriage building to serve the neighborhood's taller commercial buildings. It's one of the older buildings in the district, having not burned, where our parcel and the other neighboring parcel have been altered by fires. So the expectation of the historic context of a subservient outbuilding next to a tall commercial building is the historic context here. No harm is done in following the historic trend of newer buildings being taller than the early buildings, especially the earliest ones. When existing similar conditions exist within the district, they have similar or equal height variation ratios, so that precedent has already been established. This is Broadway on the north side between Third Avenue and Second Avenue. Here, there's a tall building next to a short building that gives a ratio of 2.9. Here's our building next to the short building and the tall building, and our ratio between the tall and the short is also 2.91, the same ratio that already exists in the district. Moreover, the guidelines call for a taller building on this site in this particular block. For the district, they establish a stepping up of massing, the lowest on Broadway with a 65-foot and a five-story limit. Then comes the next zone, the corner buildings on Broadway. Then comes a third zone. Now we're up to 80 feet and six stories. And finally, the last zone, the furthest from Broadway, that allows a taller building with a maximum of 90 feet and seven stories. In this last zone, the massing transitions from the historic district to the edge of the urban core, where we have high-rise buildings that are 30 stories and taller. Moreover, the design guidelines acknowledge the existing of taller, more dominant types of buildings: hotels, which this proposal is, financial institutions, and institutional buildings. So a taller building is a reasonable expectation for a hotel. Using the oldest, lowest building as a benchmark harms the district by not respecting the historic trends and providing unreasonable context for new buildings. When the guidelines for our particular block were established, this site was the only site in the furthest district on our block that was allowed new constructions. And the framers of the design guidelines gave a 90-foot and seven-story maximum height to assure compatibility on this site and create the proper transition to the urban core with its high rise, in light of knowing that they had one of the lowest, oldest buildings on that block. Addressing the staff's concern for the number of floors, we are not building to the maximum number of floors, nor are we building to the maximum height. Further reinforcing that doing no harm of the proposed building height next to one of the oldest, shorter buildings is similar, if not the same, context established elsewhere in the district as I showed on Broadway. The Second and Third Avenue is identical to the height variation that we would be creating. So it's inappropriate to use this lowest and older building as a benchmark to deem the proposal as incompatible by ignoring and establishing rhythms, height variations, and the historic evolution already in the district's fabric. Giving proper context to a hotel next to a stable building alongside multi-story neighboring buildings on the edge of the historic district as it transitions to the high-rise upward to over 300-foot-tall buildings on this edge of the urban core at less than the maximum height, at less than the maximum number of stories deems compatible are the framers of the guideline when they consider this particular lot for new construction. Compatibility is further established by the existence of the district of similarly proposed taller buildings, newer buildings next to the old and shortest buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Frank May, and I'm the owner of the property. And that, by the way, is Mark Robyn. I guess he's the architect. I'm an architect as well. I'm Frank May, and I've owned the property for over 30 years. Part of the historical character of the Broadway Historic District's 50 buildings is its variety of masonry architecture and the variety of building heights built over a 150-year period. There are one, two, three, four, and five-story masonry buildings in the district. Example, there are two-story buildings built in 1850, 25 feet tall, next to five-story buildings built in 1890 that is 73 feet tall with a ratio of 2.9, which is the ones we were just talking about there. Bigger buildings adjacent to smaller, older buildings have existed on Broadway for over 100 years and is part of the historical character of the Broadway. In the staff's review, staff found that one's...quote, "Staff found that one story taller than an adjacent historic building would be compatible, but that two stories taller or more would be incompatible." We feel our height difference is compatible because of the proposed building is 2.9 times taller than the shortest adjacent building, the exact same proportion as that example here. And this has been going on for 100 years. There are no existing buildings in Broadway Historic District over five floors in height, and the guidelines say no building on Broadway can be over five floors. However, the building is not on Broadway. The Broadway Design Guidelines allow infill buildings not on Broadway and over 200 feet from Broadway can be seven floors and 90 feet tall. The design guideline allows buildings not on Broadway to be 25 feet taller, yet there are no examples of seven-story buildings to show historical comparison, yet the guidelines allow it. Almost every existing building 200 feet off of Broadway is two or three floors in height, such that the drafters of the code were aware that infill buildings seven stories tall would step up in height and that this bigger step-up is compatible. The variety of buildings and the stepping up and down of buildings is the historical character of the districts. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to come before us? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion.
Sean, has this project...has it been through planning? Or no? Has it been through code review, the new downtown code?
We review it. There's...the planning department doesn't...
They come after us?
I don't even think they have to. It meets the use of the base zoning, so we review the height. It's entirely up to this commission.
Yeah, you know, I think the applicant makes a pretty compelling argument. If we look back at the guidelines that are before us, I mean, they're somewhat contradictory, the two. You know, one that allows buildings up to seven stories and 90 feet tall, and the other that says it has to be consistent with the buildings, the adjacent buildings. You could say they're contradictory, or maybe they recognize that that much difference constitutes consistency in this district. In other words, there are examples of buildings, as the applicant has pointed out, all over the district that vary in height by a number of stories. Looking at the design, it fits in...it seems to fit in great to the district, and I would be compelled, I think, to follow our guideline that states that buildings shouldn't exceed seven stories or 90 feet in this instance.
Usual battle. Yes, I agree with you, Hunter. I think that, you know, given...I walked this area yesterday and quite familiar with it, actually, since I do live downtown. There's a variation all through this area, in my view. And we've got the Pinnacle Building right down the street, the walking bridge is right there. And I think that it's a good design, and I'm not offended by it being six floors or having that height variation. And I do believe that the applicant has made a compelling argument that I think it doesn't vary significantly from the historic character of the entire down lower Broad area.
Maybe shifting to the ephist and limestone argument, Hunter, is...are you familiar with that product?
I'm not familiar with the specific product, but generally, I know the products have gotten better. I mean, I was curious if the staff would consider metal as an appropriate substitute as the applicant suggested as opposed to ephist. You know, and maybe it doesn't have to be...and I don't...I can't see the detail on this, but maybe it doesn't have to even be in a proper sort of historic form necessarily, you know, but could imply a cornice without being too detailed in metal. So maybe the staff could address whether they would find that appropriate.
Yes, that type of thing has been approved in the past, but ephist has never been approved.
And as...Robin, just for general knowledge, as products are improved and new products introduced, I know we have accepted things all along. If someone were to want that and would produce that product, what's the timeframe on you all investigating to see if it would be an appropriate application?
It just depends on the product, how long it's been around, how much information's available about it.
Okay. All right. And just for general information, those...this comes up.
You're absolutely right. I mean, we're happy, as I'm sure you are as well, to look at any new material or any material that has changed over time at any point.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other discussion?
So, Robin, would that not affect this particular project, you looking at that new ephist, if their...if their, you know, presentation would be an upgraded version of ephist?
We've been kind of keeping track of ephist, and we still don't think it's an appropriate material, but again, we're happy to look at it again. But if they are happy with metal as a solution, that may be the easiest route to take. And then there's other options, too.
I think also, you know, ephist has a general appearance and functions like traditional stucco, which is more of a wall material versus a cornice material. So if it's been approved in the district, I would...you know, and maybe it hasn't at all, but just as, you know, if it's simulating stucco, you know, we might consider it differently if we were looking at a wall application potentially as...versus, you know, a cornice detail, which would either be wood or stone typically historically.
All right. Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Before I make a motion, just to confirm, I guess, the conditions that the applicant had concerns about were the cornice not being ephist and the...and the height. Is that it? Is that...
And if you wouldn't mind just throwing in a final review of all materials, windows, doors...
That's already in the staff report, right?
Yes, that's already there, yes.
Okay. Is that applicant correct? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve staff recommendation, including conditions with the exception that the height may be six stories as it's consistent with the allowable heights on this street in our guidelines, and that the...an alternate material for the cornice shall be metal. So clear?
And that the staff approves those specific material selections? Windows and doors?
Yeah, and all other conditions that were included.
All right. Okay. All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion with alterations to the... I might add, if anyone was here for McFerrin Avenue, that has been withdrawn. Correct?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. 222 Third Avenue North.
The project includes a re-competition, new storefronts... A wall on Second Avenue, a wall sign on Second Avenue, a corner sign at the corner of Second Avenue in the alley, and a wall sign at the alley entrance, as well as some alterations to the historic building. Alterations to the alley itself, such as the outdoor seating area and lighting, are not a part of the review at this time because the Downtown Partnership is working on an overall design for the alley, and the applicant would like to meet that design requirement. So they may return at a later time for some of those features. Staff recommends approval with the conditions that applicant seeks administrative approval of materials and methods for cleaning and repair of masonry. No lighting be integrated into awnings. An applicant seeks administrative approval of materials to replace the materials on the plan shown as ephist and crayon. With these conditions, staff finds the project meets the design guidelines for additions and alterations in the Second Avenue Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The applicant agrees with all the conditions with the exception of the crayon material on the front ground level, and so they'd like to tell you a little bit about that. And I've got a sample I can pass around. But did you have any questions for me before they come up?
You rattled off several signs on the building. Are we in line with all of our square footages for signage?
Very much so. They're not even close to what they're allotted.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions for staff? What are they asking on the floor for?
Well, it's not an appeal, but they're just asking for permission for this material I'll start to pass around. So they've agreed with all other conditions. Some of the conditions we even have drawings for already. The ephist, for example, that you see on your plans was an error. They aren't even really asking for that, but since it's there, we added it as a condition. So the only thing I believe that they'd like to ask you for is to keep this material. You see an example of it on the screen. It will be on the ground level, Second Avenue side, on the front. You can see the entrance is slightly recessed. There's two bays that are recessed, and this is the material they'd like to use there.
And staff is okay with that?
No, we did not think it was appropriate material, so they'd like to tell you a little bit more about it.
Okay. One more thing, Robin. This...I'm getting myself mixed up. This side, is it between...on Third Avenue, is it between Broadway and Church, or is it north of Church Street? I'm trying...I'm having a tough time recognizing this building.
It's south of it. It goes from Second Avenue to Third.
Okay.
And it's a long banker alley.
Okay.
That helps.
All right. Thank you.
It's two doors down from the Stallman Building.
Okay. I know exactly where it is.
On Third.
Robin, could you all point out on the elevation where this material is being proposed?
I may need my glasses here. So I know you can't really see the screen, and you...this will not show up on your screen, but the two...thanks. The two right bays, and you have this drawing in your packets as well. The two right bays are slightly recessed, and this is the material that they'd like to put in there.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We'll open the public hearing.
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Greenberg, and I'm president of 21C Museum Hotels, and very happy to be with you all today. We're really excited about this project. 21C Museum Hotels is a combination of contemporary art museum, boutique hotel, restaurant and bar, all combined into one building. We currently have four hotels that are open, two under construction, and three others, one of which is this project in Nashville, in development. Of those nine projects that are either open or under development, eight of them have been historic rehab projects totaling over $300 million of historic preservation efforts. Displaying contemporary art in a historic building is something that really excites us, something that we're really proud of, and something that we're very passionate about. We have rehabilitated office buildings, storage buildings, manufacturing buildings, bank buildings, old hotels. We're getting ready to redo an old city hall, and we're really, really excited about this project in Nashville. I'm going to turn it over to our...one of our architects, Brent, who will talk in a little bit more detail and then about this crayon project.
Hi, my name is Brent Tauck. I'm with Perfida Weiscup Architects. We're an architecture firm in Pittsburgh. We are the executive architects on the project. The crayon material in question is limited in use to some recessed entries on the Second Avenue side. So the Second Avenue side, we've integrated an accessible entrance into that space. The existing recess in the current building is rather dark. It's not all that nice of a space. It's clad in an existing stucco material. So we're looking to kind of improve the brightness of that space a little bit, make it something more inviting to the street. The material that we're proposing using is called crayon. It is a solid surface material. It's similar in feel to stone material. It's actually made of a...it's a composite of minerals and resins, so it's similar to a marble panel or something like that, but it's a little bit simpler in color. As I noted, it's simply in the recessed area. There's nothing on the actual historic facade. We think it complements the historic materials that are there and allows them to be played up, and it sits in the area that's recessed there. So I'll pass around...I have another sample here if you need that, and a few other images if they're useful.
Say it again?
I was just...when you're looking at that, you can see that it's the panels, as Brent mentioned, it's the panels that are recessed inside of the...it's not... I was just, when you're looking at that, you can see that it's the, it's the panels, as Brent mentioned, it's the, it's the panels that are recessed inside of the, it's not, it's not on the flush front on the street front of the building. It's, it's all recessed inside that area.
I have a couple of questions, if you all are finished with your presentation. So would these be in just large vertical sheets as the rendering suggests?
They are. They're, they're, the sheet's about three foot wide, eight foot tall. There are also some concealed doors in there that lead to a bellhops and an emergency stair regress that comes out of the building.
And then it appears that you're bringing, bringing the, this material out almost to the front face of the brick, and I guess I'm curious about that because it seems like from a preservation perspective, sort of maintaining the integrity of the brick, the masonry wall there and the depth, there might maybe, you know, could there be alternatives to that?
So I would agree with that, but the one thing that I do need to point out, the masonry piers that are here adjacent to this have actually been rebuilt. Sometime in the middle of the century, there was a loading door that was installed in this northern bay. So right now, the brick that's there is only a face material. There's an existing stucco that wraps around it in a similar manner to what we're doing, but obviously providing what we think is a material upgrade over the, the stucco that's there. The brick being only four inches deep behind it is a CMU backup wall.
One quick clarification. The, the other white material that I see on the facade of the building and on the, on the, at the sidewalk level and higher.
Yeah.
Isn't, this is not the Creon material?
This is not the Creon material, no. This is, what you see on the face of the building is all existing. It's all existing limestone. It might be a little lighter in the rendering than it actually is in real life, but, but it's limestone.
Thank you.
Anyone have any more questions for the acting?
Oh, if not, we'll close the public here. Is there anyone else that's here to address this presentation? If not, we'll close the public hearing and open for discussion.
I have a question for staff. If you guys could elaborate on finding this not appropriate or not appropriate in the way it's being used, or not durable, or the, you know, sort of your basis for that.
When substitute materials are allowed, they usually should be similar in texture and feel and color to the historic material it's sort of replacing. This one, obviously, is it technically replacing because the storefront is not original, as, as they pointed out. But if it is to have a stone look, it doesn't really have any texture to it like stone. It doesn't have a color to it like the stone that we see here in Tennessee, the limestone we see here, and it's not being used in blocks like stone. So it was the, the large sheets and the texture and the color. We're concerned that it would just look like a large, almost plastic kind of sheet.
Did you, did you all have this discussion with them prior to this and make any suggestions?
No, we did not make any suggestions.
Okay.
But, but they obviously have worked with us for quite a while and have done everything that we've asked them to, but it's been a great project. They came in already really understanding the building and knowing the right thing to do.
Okay.
Robin, real quick, and I should know the answer to this. I used to live across the street from this place. What, how altered are the nature of these two openings? Are they, are they going to remain the same, aside from the material aside? Are they using the original openings on the facade?
Does the recess exist?
Yes.
It does.
Okay.
But again, all of that is 1980s anyway, to begin with, so we're not losing any historic configurations or materials there.
Okay. Well, I certainly understand your concern with the material. I don't think it's a bad material, but I am sitting here asking myself if this is the right application. If it's in three foot tall panels, it's, it's going to look like a giant ceiling tile. However, the fact that the, where they're placing it was done in the 80s, half of me feels like this might be a historic portion that we allow to evolve to some degree. That, this is as plain as I can state in my opinion. I would like another one, please.
I'm kind of inclined to accept it. It's, it's a very, it's in a very limited area. And, I mean, personally, I kind of like to see a hint of modern in some of this stuff, and I think they've kind of hit a really good balance. And I've been in one of their hotels, and they're pretty exquisite. And I, there's no way that's going to look like a, a ceiling tile. I mean, it's going to be done very well, and so I, I just think because it's fairly limited in, in where it is in the project, I, I kind of, it sort of appeals to me just personally, that little touch of modern whatever.
I concur. I, I do like to see small, modern touches and contemporary touches applied to historic buildings. I've said since I've been on this commission that I believe that our historic structures should be allowed to some degree to evolve, and this is not a very large evolution. So I'm inclined to, to agree with Richard.
I think it's, for me, the, this positive thing is that this area's already been altered. Had it not been altered, I think the conversation would be very, very different, and whether something historic evolves and the degree to which it devolves is, that's a threshold issue. And I think we're sort of over that threshold that this, at least the second bay, it sounds like, was built out in the 80s. And I tend to agree with what Richard said. I guess the only thing I, it's hard to tell from the drawing, but it seems to me that even if this is brick over CMU block, as you turn the corner on the, the middle pier, to me, as long as it's, it's set into the brick within and not overlapping the brick, that makes a huge difference. I assume they would build that way anyway, but that might be a condition for me to make sure that truly is fully set in, and you aren't altering even the, the corners of the piers and the facade that still is historic.
So you mean that this material will not corner up with the brick, the inset?
Have it flushed with the? Flushed with the brick, but the full four inches, if it's four inch brick, the full four inches is shown and is set in and not overlapping the brick as you approach the facade. So really, it's set in, say, four inches from the facade.
Erin, I agree with your idea conceptually. I wonder if that might highlight the fact that it's just a veneer even more so, though, I guess the, you know, the other question would be, is it, so the, the brick that's on these piers, is it not the original brick? No. And is it painted now? No. Are they planning on painting it? No. Okay. I was just curious about, you know, could you go in and turn the corner with enough brick to give it a little depth that would bring back, you know, that sort of massiveness that, that we feel along Second Avenue with those piers? And I don't know if that would be practical or with the CMU behind it, if that even makes sense. I don't know if you guys looked at that. You're welcome to answer that.
So I don't know that we've looked at it in detail. We, to see how far back the brick goes, we do believe it's only a, a four inch brick, and I'm not sure how far across the CMU it comes. We did consider whether we could recess that and, and put it in a flush plane, and part of the reason we decided to, to use the approach we have now is for the, the simple reason of, we didn't want to imply that it was just a, a four inch masonry face, and also, you know, not knowing the condition with the, the current stucco coming over and covering a portion of that brick, we thought it was kind of appropriate to come to the same spot and, and cover what's there, not knowing what's behind it. We may find something different when we start tearing things down, but we're, we're not at that point right now, so.
And Robin, I suppose if they found that it could, that they could come back and actually put new brick in to form the corner, would you all find that appropriate, and maybe find the application of this material potentially, potentially more appropriate? I don't know if it'd change your opinion about the material, but at least the, the application of it.
It doesn't really change your opinion about the material and how it's applied in the large sheets, but it would, would be appropriate, yes.
Okay. And I guess that one of the challenges there is that they're not going to be able to match the brick exactly, and we would frown upon painting the brick, is that right?
In this case, potentially not because it's not historic brick, but I don't believe there's a plan to paint it now.
Could we, is it, how feasible is it to match the historic brick color if we, if they chose to paint it?
I really can't answer that right here today.
Okay. All right. I won't press you. So it sounds like, Hunter and Erin, what, what we keep talking about here is this one slender piece, not so much the panels that go up the stairwell.
I think it's on both sides of that.
Well, it's, yeah, it's the same edge.
Okay.
Right, so near the face of the brick.
You know, I tend to agree. Certainly, I'm familiar with this brand, and I've seen their hotels, and I, my biggest concern is how the details ultimately are done on this. And I personally have great confidence. I mean, we don't have the details, I don't guess, in the drawings, but personally have great confidence that this is their main, their front door, their main entry, and it's not going to look like ceiling tile, that their whole concept around combining historic with modern art, historic buildings with modern art, I suspect modern interiors as well. You know, it brings a glimpse of that out to the street in a way that doesn't harm the historic, existing historic structure. So, you know, I don't know if we can fiddle with the detail today because even our applicant doesn't exactly know what's behind that wall, and I don't know if it would be appropriate in a motion to suggest that, you know, if we approve the material, but suggest that the applicant continue to work with, with the staff to, on the details of how the material's used, especially as it, as it meets the brick, given the concerns that were raised today.
Also, in, in a motion, I'd like for us to be able to state why we're approving that, and because it is, they, it is inset, so that we are not setting a precedent that it could be used on the exterior, on the, the proper, the formal exterior of the building. So.
I agree. It's, it's that it's inset and that it is a previously altered area, and I think also that it's not dominant on the facade anyway. It's maybe 30 or 40% of the facade and recessed and been altered.
From setting a precedent. And if, if you will bear with me, I'm going to be the kink in the works. I heard a lot about, I like it, it doesn't offend me, it, it looks good, but the decision has to be based on, based on the guidelines. So if you look on page seven, part F, those are your guidelines for materials. If you wouldn't mind pulling it back to those in your motion, whoever makes the motion, we, we would appreciate that.
Do you have that in a slide? Sorry. I need to sit by Ann. She prints everything.
Yeah, here, let me.
She's got it. Copy it. What did you say?
I said it was kitchen tile.
Oh, kitchen tile. Yeah. Speaking of kitchen tile, is there not a historic precedent for, in these insets? And I don't know if in this district necessarily, but it seems like I can recall historic buildings that when they inset the entrances, often there was tile on the floor and maybe even tile on the walls. Now, it was, it was not large vertical sheets, but it, it was.
That's in part four. Blazed tile are appropriate. Stone is appropriate. Fossil stone. Stone-ish.
So, Hunter, you're doing, are y'all gonna, working on crafting a motion for us?
I'm working on reading all the, the seven items and the guidelines here.
Anyone else have any comments following that?
Again, in the motion, number six does say large expanses of featureless materials are not appropriate. So the, this particular stone we're talking about is 36 inches wide by how thick and how?
I think it's at eight feet.
Eight feet. So, again, we need to address that if we're going to approve it.
I'm, I'm having one last thought while we, while we consider this. Although I like this material, if, if we set a precedent today to use this, it could be a fallback on so many other projects where it's not appropriate as we see it today.
I think you had several reasons why this particular place on the building and use of the material is, is unique. So I don't know that staff worries as much about making that argument. It's just making sure that the motion explains how it meets the guidelines.
How it meets the guidelines and why we're accepting it in this location and not setting ourselves up for others.
Fair enough. I feel, I feel better then.
Okay, all right.
You guys aren't waiting on me, are you?
Yeah.
For a motion?
Making sure that we cover all the conditions and, if we was on the right track.
I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendation with the exception of the Creon material being prohibited and allow it based on the guideline F1, well, to be F1, that believing that the relationship in use of materials, texture details, et cetera, is visually compatible, and not going to contrast conspicuously with other buildings, but that being a, a sliding scale, most notably because it's going to be recessed. This area has previously been altered, and I have one other reason to distinguish this.
Minimal usage?
And that, yeah, and that it's, it's not a dominant feature of the facade on top of being recessed, and that with respect to subsections F2 through 7, it doesn't, based on that language, it, it doesn't patently violate any of those. So I fall back to F1 and, and think that that's our general guideline as to not contrasting conspicuously, and again, based on the three reasons that it's recessed, not dominant, and a previously altered area.
Second. Robin, do we need to add to that motion? If we feel it's important for the applicant to work with you on the details and the application in particular, how it meets the brick or relates to the brick, does that need to be part of the motion? Are they going to have to do that anyways? And if you can't come to agreement there, it would, it would come back to us anyways? Is that?
That's correct. That's correct.
So it doesn't need to be part of the motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
That part of the motion is covered in the applicant seeks the administrative approval of materials to replace. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. 1304 Fourth Avenue and 1309 Third Avenue.
This project is to construct a multifamily complex with minimal materials used within the Germantown Historic Preservation Centering Overlay. The Germantown National Register of Historic Places District. The commission approved the enassing on November 19th last year, and the applicant is returning for final review of details and materials. Staff recommends approval with the conditions that the corner of Monroe Street and Fourth not exceed four stories. Mechanicals, utilities, and service areas be located along the alley or on the rooftop with appropriate screening. Applicants seek administrative approval of windows and doors, masonry dimensions and texture, lighting, trim, railings, paving and walkways, awnings and canopies, parking structures, and fences and walls. Applicant obtain a preservation permit for signage. The bike entrance includes stucco rather than lap siding and steel brackets beneath the masonry bay. There be a change in materials between the foundation and the upper walls. Angled entrances be reoriented to fully face the street, and any stair wall that exceeds three feet in height be redesigned to prevent a massive wall along the street. With these conditions, staff finds the project to meet the design guidelines. The applicant has agreed to most of these conditions, therefore, I'll not fully present this case unless you have some questions, and I'll just focus on those conditions that they would like to ask you for. One, staff recommends that there be a change in materials between the foundation and the upper walls. This could be done with a different brick color, or a stone, or split-faced CMU. This has been a standard condition you've requested of us, based on the fact that historic buildings typically had a change of materials at the foundation level. Second, staff recommends that any stair wall that exceeds three feet in height be redesigned to prevent a massive wall along the street, and I believe they have another design to show you today. And did, unless you had any questions for staff, the applicant is here to talk about those two conditions.
Any questions, staff? We open the public hearing. Thank you.
I have one quick one, Robin. At the beginning of your presentation, you were talking about mechanicals, utilities, service areas located in the alley. Is that a problem?
No, we don't, it doesn't show on the plan, so that's a fairly standard condition. I'm sure there will probably be on the alley or on the rooftop, which is fine. We just added it in since they're not apparent on the place.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. How are you?
Good afternoon, commissioners. The applicant, Chris Venish, with Price Development Group, 4520 Madison, Kansas City, Missouri. PDG Germantown is located between Third Avenue North and Fourth Avenue North, just north of Monroe Street. Applicable design guidelines influencing the site are 3.0, new construction where there's minimal historical context, or historical context no longer exists. As previously mentioned by staff, at the November 2014 commission hearing, the commission voted to recommend for approval to the planning commission and metro council height enassing. We're here today to talk to you about the elevations and materials. As stated by staff, there are eight conditions which staff recommends be updated prior to approval. Also stated by staff, PDG has submitted drawings, plans, et cetera, addressing a number of these conditions. I'd like to go through preview of these, no particular order on the conditions though with y'all. Condition one, which is the height, and Sean, I believe you have some of this here. The project transitions, and we'll go to the PDF with the plans there, that sheet 12, please, the second. Yes, sir. The project transition from a four-story to a three-story along Fourth Avenue North, and from a five-story to a four-story to a three-story along Third Avenue North, and then along Monroe, to a four-story to a five-story going west to east, as it relates to the height at Fourth and Monroe. Originally, we were trying to create an architectural detail at this corner element there and pop that up there. We have since scaled that back, so it is more in line with the parapet walls to the, to the east there, but still allows a little bit of roof change and interest there along the roof. So this is the new plan as relates to the corner of Fourth and Monroe there, and you can see that in elevation two. If we switch to the next slide, please, you can see, this was the existing condition on elevation one, where we had the pop-up there at the corner. So we brought that down in, in scale there. One more, please, Sean. And there it is, as it relates to Fourth Avenue and how we brought that height down on Fourth there. It is maintaining the four stories, but we've brought that height down there. This is how we're addressing condition one. Conditions seven and eight at orientation, we've updated our elevations to better announce the common or public area entrances through the use of glass doors, side lights, and standing seam awnings. The new elevations illustrate this, and materials of the awnings and doors will be resubmitted to staff for their approval. If we go one more section here, it's tough to see in the black and white elevation here, but about midway on elevation two was what was submitted. If we go to the next slide, we can see we've added the glass there, we've increased the awning there, and add a little bit more attention to that, there we go, to that common entrance. Staff also requested that we update those units with angled front doors off the stoop to be reoriented to face the street. This has been done in this, in this updated elevation as well here. If you can go back one slide for me, and we'll zoom that in again, and about midway on slide, on elevation two, scroll over to your right, please, you can see, you can see the elevation with the stoop on the right-hand side of the screen, my right-hand side, I guess it's yours too, did not have, did not have the doorway facing the street. This has been changed, unit has been updated, so we do have a front door there. These front doors are two-panel, eight-foot doors with side lights to be truly addressed in the front door and, and front of the street there. As relates to the stoop and stair walls over three feet in height, staff was concerned with the side approach as we are illustrating here on our stoop entrance, and the height of the walls was created along the street edge. Now, the site does have some challenges. If we can go one more slide here, please. The site actually falls 10 feet from the northwest corner to the southeast corner of the site, from Fourth Avenue mid-block to Third Avenue and Monroe, actually falls 10 feet. In addition to that, we have an alley which bisects the site. The alley is actually higher than both Third and Fourth Avenue, six inches higher than Fourth, anywhere from two to six-plus feet higher than, than Third. So we've got this alley kind of centered here that is maintaining, that we're not removing and we're not abandoning. So creates some challenges in how we lay out, lay out the site there and work with the site. Obviously, from a design perspective, we don't want to put any of our units really in the hole there. It's harder to have units and residences sitting down subterranean here. Additionally, we're limited with how much we can step the building because of fair housing compliance is and what we need to do in that regard. That said, we've laid the project out so that the building actually does step or drops from Fourth Avenue to Third Avenue, and also from the north property line to the south property line. Can we go one more slide, and I can show this pretty, right here, you can see the varying elevation changes we have with the structure. We start slightly below grade in both the green areas there, and then drop with the grade as, as best we can to try to get down as close as possible to grade. We are at the alley there, we're about two feet below grade, not ideal, but what we need to do to kind of catch up and, and transition to the south there. The comment was really more so onto the walls and what was created along Third Avenue there. Fourth Avenue, one more slide, please. Fourth Avenue here, what we were able to do, Fourth Avenue is at the bottom of your screen there. Fourth Avenue there, we are predominantly at grade. We've also created a more interactive stoop condition with larger front stoop areas. Along Third Avenue and at Monroe, originally, we were looking at a side approach, as you can see from this design there. It was recommended this created too much of a long, too much of a wall along Third Avenue here. So what we've done, and one more slide here, this is our, our new update, and this is tough, I'm going to have to ask you to blow that up there, because I have just, just been working on this over the last few days here, but what we've been able to do to assist in bringing down the height along Third Avenue and at the corner, let's look at Third Avenue itself. Stoops along Third Avenue have been readjusted from the current plan, the side approach plan, to now a frontal approach. Now, this eliminates the three-foot-tall walls there. Additionally, this increases our landscape bed there. We're ranging anywhere from a little bit better than 10 feet at the southern end, and our smallest landscape setback is now about eight feet. So we've increased that landscape area to soften that, that front door there and that, and that area along the back of sidewalk, and we've also have the frontal approach there, which we feel is a little bit more engaging with the street. What we have done at the corner of Third and Monroe, right there, which is a prominent corner, and we wanted to have some structure, then wanted to have some, some dominant outdoor space there, so we've created kind of a cascade effect with a two-tiered planner system there. The first planner is actually two feet up in elevation, and then it transitions up to about, it's 4.3 feet high, right there. Along Monroe, we maintain the side approach but have dropped the wall height, and this, this condition where we are taller than three feet is only east of the alley, and we have a side approach there that we still maintain. What we're able to do, the, the stoop area is five feet deep. Then we had the stoop outside of the building area, which is a little bit better than three feet. We took that up by dropping one riser, actually, two risers, one tread, excuse me, down to an intermediate landing, and that brought the wall height down to less than three feet. So that's how we approached that condition along Monroe. Mass and scale was another condition, was condition five, and we've updated the elevation to comply with the conditions of approval. This was a change in material from siding to stucco, and then steel support angles to support the masonry. Walls, exterior materials, really just a question of clarity here. It's recommended that there is a material change between the foundation and the upper walls here. There's confusion, confusion on my side here, and if we can go to the other PDF quickly here. When I look around the Germantown area, I look at newer projects built in the area here, and this, this is, the words are in sight here, and if you look here, what we're proposing is very similar to this, which is a soldier row at the foundation there, to distinguish the finished floor from the foundation. And you find this condition existing not only at this project, but we have a townhome project at Fourth and Jefferson, and we have Vista Germantown project, which is between Fifth and Sixth along Jefferson as well there, and if we just flip through these pages here, you can see the condition where the soldier row is. This is our preferred treatment of, of how we treat the, the finished floor and the, and the upper walls to the foundation. Looking for some clarity from the commission on this, because this is what we are presenting, this is what we would like to, to do at, at our project here, and you can see, this has it, but it's not at foundation, it's actually a little further up. This is a, this project's catty corner from our site here. So just existing conditions throughout the area, and thus why we designed it as we did. I do have the material board with me as well today. There really weren't many questions that staff presented on the material board. I do, it may be, have materials that we can, we can pass around to touch and feel if, if commission would like to do so. I think on page 11 of the submittal, it outlines locations of the, of these materials, styles of these materials, as well as specification sheets have been, have been submitted on these materials. As it relates to roof, utilities, mechanical, and the screening of those conditions, I do need some clarity on this as well as relates to the alley condition. At the alley, we have a transformer located there, and the clarity I'm looking for is whether or not the transformer, because it's located at the alley, needs, needs a wall screening, or if in fact, that is a different condition because it is at the alley. Site plan on your package there illustrates the transformer location. Conditions that I've not discussed are acceptable to us, and as I mentioned, what I did discuss was a preview of plans that we will resubmit. I do have the two conditions that I do need clarity on, being the foundation wall, and then the transformer and what needs to be done at that location. Other than that, we will resubmit our complaints and in our agreement with the conditions. So today, I'm asking for material and elevation approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this point? Thank you. Anyone here that would like to address us on this application? If not, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion.
Sean, do you have, can you give us a, a site plan image of the transformer on our screens up here? Did you have that?
Since the transformer is in the alley, it does not need screening, because it's in the alley.
Okay.
It's, it's actually located, you can see it at the, it's on the property, it's off the alley.
Okay.
So just, just to be clear.
Sorry, is it?
There you go.
Oh.
Right there.
So it's just on the alley side, it's not in the alley?
Exactly.
That protrude into the alley?
Exactly.
Robin, is that the transformer you were speaking of? I mean, I, I saw some boxes further down the alley that, that weren't on the street like this is, that I thought you, you were speaking of. Is this one, does this one need special treatment?
It, it's completely up to you. Anything truly in the alley doesn't need screening, because it's in the alley. Other things might, depending on what they are right here.
I think it's a little bit different with the one that faces Monroe versus the one that's deep between Monroe and the other North South Street.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I mean, and I, you know, I don't know exactly what the design guidelines would require, or might require, but I would, I would consider that particular transformer at the corner of Monroe in the alley, so it's on both, so at least from Monroe, some type of opaque screening, which even could be, again, I don't know what the guidelines would, if the guidelines would require anything specific, but, you know, could potentially be evergreen landscaping, you know, which relatively mature, evergreen landscaping. But again, if the guidelines specify, then, so we could, we could include in our motion some sort of opaque screening of the...
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
NES will obviously influence what we can put up as screening there, so it'll be a non-combustible material, if that is so. I don't think, just, just be a wall.
Masonry, most likely.
Right. I know they've got blast wall requirements, which you might be forced to apply here, I don't know, but, so I think as long as it's an opaque material, I would be comfortable. And then I just wanted to clarify, too, of all the conditions, I think this is what the applicant said, that essentially, you're asking for an exception to, or a translation of the, the foundation requirement that the staff has as a condition, and clarification on the transformer screening, and all, all other conditions, at least, and maybe the staff probably hasn't had a chance to review, or maybe that's a question for staff, all like the changes in the foundations and the stoops and, or, excuse me, the walls, the low walls. Sounds like the applicant has, you know, gone to a great effort to try to achieve the intent of the guidelines and the intent of that, of that condition, and have you all had a chance to review those, or?
We have, they were given to me, but I honestly have not had a chance to review them, but I agree, it does appear that, that all those other conditions have been met, so it really just comes down to the change of materials at the foundation, and we've already discussed the screen wall.
Mm-hmm. And with regard to the three-foot walls, since you haven't had a chance to really look at those in detail outside of the presentation today, we might want to just clarify that staff approve alternates to that condition. Would that be appropriate? Okay. And, you know, on the soldier course, I'm interested in how the rest of the commission feels. Of course, one of those projects they showed, you know, was our project, so, but the question is regardless of what we've done in the past, and maybe staff has decided, you know, often we, we make rulings... you know, often we we make rulings or staff even make recommendations, and then it gets built and we get out there and we realize, you know, maybe next time we ought to do it differently. That might be a case here, I don't know, or or those were had certain exceptions or were in different parts of the district that had less. For example, the Wurthen property is on an industrial, you know, specifically in the guidelines references the Wurthen industrial buildings as precedent. I don't know if that affected the commission's decision previously or not, or the staff's decision on that.
To me, the soldier course probably works in this instance because just the magnitude of this thing. And I think if we start putting on either another material or changing color or something, it just may be maybe overwhelming, maybe just to me personally, that such so much is going on that a soldier course may give us what we need.
I agree with Richard. I think when you're looking at one- and two-story buildings, having a different foundation material often looks just right. But it it can be visually incompatible to change, to do something more than the subtle soldier row or basket weave or whatever you're doing with the the masonry material there at the at the finished floor elevation. When you have a number of other materials higher up on stories three, four, five, it can get really busy and to me visually incompatible. So I'm I'm fine with it in this particular application.
Other discussion?
Is the soldier course proposed to be projected like we saw in some of the photographs of?
That's my understanding, just a slight projection.
Yeah, I think that does make a big difference. It defines a foundation line, which is.
Robin, real quick, just to clarify at the end of this discussion, the applicant has addressed a very long list of recommendations. It sounds like you're all playing nice and getting along, right?
Absolutely. Definitely. And I know it seems like a lot of conditions, but they're all fairly minor. And again.
And it sounds like we're getting them accomplished.
Ninety percent of them were accomplished before we even walked to the door.
Okay.
I guess you used the word nice.
Am I? Okay. Are you behaving professionally? I just just want to be sure that 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 the applicant and your staff are working together and you're coming to to an agreement on these these issues and we don't have to sit here with an iron fist today.
Well, that is your job, though, is to make a decision.
I know, and I'm trying not to do it.
If I understand it correctly, we really just have, it sounds like of the eight conditions, six of them have been worked out and accepted, subject to Robin taking a closer look. But it seems like from the presentation, a little bit on the fly, we're in good shape and it's the the transformer and the change of materials or not at the finished floor elevation. Is that, that's what we whittle down to?
All right. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll try. I move approval of 1304 Fourth Avenue North and 1309 Third Avenue North, based on staff Clarifying that the that a soldier course will be acceptable, be an acceptable solution for the to differentiate the foundation and that the transformer needs a solid screen on the Third Avenue side.
On Monroe.
On Monroe, sorry.
All right.
Second.
Did that include all other conditions?
The what?
Did that include all the other conditions?
And let's kept all of those, right?
Right, okay. I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Second, and then can we have one quick discussion?
Sure.
Just that, Richard, if I'm right, I'd just, I'd like to make a motion to just clarify that the soldier course is protruding. I think Hunter made a good point that that makes a big difference in setting it off, that the soldier course protrudes off the facade, you know.
Like in that?
Like consistent with the images that I looked at today.
Different elevation. So I'll clarify that the soldier course would protrude slightly away from the rest of the facade.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion ahead.
1419 Holly Street. Thank you.
1419 Holly Street is an application for construction of an outbuilding for use as a garage and detached accessory dwelling unit on this site. The house is non-contributing, built in 2013. The outbuilding will be a story and a half with a garage on the first floor, living space on the second. It meets the design guidelines, lot area, height and scale, character, roof form, details, materials. However, it does not meet the guidelines or the section of Metro Code, which require that additional access shall be from the alley and that parking access from any public street to be limited to one driveway for the lot with a maximum width of 12 feet. In addition, with the garage doors facing the street as currently proposed, Metro Code requires a minimum setback of 20 feet from the street. Staff recommends that the outbuilding meet this requirement to be compatible with the context. So staff's recommendation is for approval of the outbuilding with the conditions that the orientation be changed to the garage doors facing the alley, that the setback is a minimum of 20 feet from North 15th Street, and that staff have review of windows, doors, and garage doors. Context of the house and the lot. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is as well.
Paul, per your recommendation or per your staff's recommendations, that will meet all the Metro Code requirements?
That's correct.
Hi, my name is John Reed. I'm the architect for the project, 753 Aloe A Street. I brought some additional imagery that kind of shows a picture from the alley during winter time. It's a little easier to see the grade because that's very important to this conversation about the orientation to the garage. Also, to reiterate, this is a corner lot. I'm not sure where the 20-foot requirement is coming from. The side set, the setback off of the side street is 10 feet. It's not. Shaking your head, no.
Code requires 20.
For for an accessory building, it's 10 feet if the garage doors are facing the street.
20 if the garage doors are facing the street. I think, I think if they didn't face the street, it could be 10, which could be.
We'll come back to that, I guess. In addition to the grade issues that we're trying to deal with, the alley is very tight. Also, there was an existing structure on this lot that was demolished, and what we're trying to do is is bring that building edge to align with the the house and enter, have the cars enter that garage on the high side of that, of the forest sides of the of the garage. We tried to mitigate the driveway width by doing, proposing parking strips. That's what we've shown in that site plan. Again, there's no curb cuts because there's no curb on the street. It's, obviously, it's a grassed edge. But we were trying to mitigate the the impact to the street connection as much as possible. We're also using the building to screen one of the owner's desires to have a parking area behind the garage, so we were we were kind of using the building to screen that area in the site plan you see there. And that's partially if if, because this is a DADU and the owner is using the garage for his personal, to allow a tenant somewhere to park other than the street. So we're, that's, it's kind of all one big design solution wrapped up in one. And we were trying to, you know, again, mitigate those, the impact to the side street by utilizing a lot of it. And again, grade being a major reason why we oriented it towards the side street. Hopefully, that photograph helps you see that it's about three, three and a half feet, maybe four feet from the alley connection to the property corner. So if we were to turn the building, it would, because it's a corner lot, it would it would dominate the entire width of the property almost.
Anyone else would like to address this, that issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion.
A quick question, I guess, for Paul. Outside of the historic zoning code, all we're really worried about here are the Metro Code requirements? Are we are we considering them separately?
In particular, Commissioner, which which requirement?
Well, the setbacks, the orientation, which which applies to what we're here to discuss today and which is, for lack of a better term, which is on Metro.
There are a couple of things addressing that. I mean, I'm looking at the the section of the Metro Code right now, which states on lots with alley access, any additional access shall be from the alley. So that's where that portion comes from. The setback, you know, the guidelines have a portion relating to the the context on a corner lot. However, Metro Code does require 20 feet off the street when the garage doors open onto the street. So it would be on your part a redetermination, a determination of that reduced setback. Does that?
Could I ask for a clarification on that? Because we are in charge of setbacks. Is that correct?
There's there's several different issues here. One question is the setback. That's what codes is. You have the ability to change that setback, to alter that, and that's what the applicant is asking for. Another issue is the driveway. This is something you don't have the authority to do. The ordinance states that if it's a DADU, if there's an apartment in it, there can only be one driveway and it cannot exceed 12 feet in width. You do not have the authority to change that. You do have the authority to change the setback if you think find that to be appropriate. The design guidelines talk about setbacks being similar to what's seen historically in the neighborhood. And across the street, the garage that's sort of in the same location appears to have a good 17 to 19-foot setback. So that's why we were sticking by the code setback of 20 feet.
You're you're considering the concrete parking as an initial driveway?
No, we're considering the two strip driveways leading to the two garage doors as two driveways or one driveway that's too wide. Either way you look at it, it doesn't meet the code that you don't have the authority to change.
So what we're, what staff's asking the applicant to do is just flip this thing towards the alley and everything's okay? And so we're down to a 10-foot versus 20-foot setback? Am I correct in assuming that?
Well, the the ask was that it would have a 20-foot setback and that it would be oriented off the alley, which would take care of the driveway issue.
Okay.
I think staff's recommendation makes a lot of sense. If there's an alley that, I mean, there is some slope here, but I don't think it's unusable at all. If there's an alley, we ought to use it. And this street does get a lot of pedestrian traffic and is scheduled for a sidewalk at some point, it's just not there yet. And there was an existing driveway before that house was demolished, but that was, you know, a non-contributing gravel situation. But surely, given, I mean, it's a normal-sized lot, it's a deep lot, I would think there's a way to get into, from the alley into the garage and still have some kind of parking pad screen between it and the other, if if the parking pad is what they need for the tenant, find a way to get that in as well. Staff recommendation made sense to me.
I, looking at the site plan here with regard to the setback, we write a lot of design guidelines for communities, both existing and new. And this is sort of textbook of what we often require, that the outbuilding be, you know, pushed up to basically the same setback as the primary building. One thing that that, the reason why we like that, and I know this is sort of out, perhaps outside of our guidelines, but it 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 helps define the alley. It helps with all the other stuff that goes back there, your trash cans, your parking, things like that. It puts that on the other side, so you've got a building, you know, on on the street rather than all the other junk. And so while the while the one across the street might be pushed further back, I certainly don't think it's out of context of this neighborhood and other historic neighborhoods to have the outbuilding essentially aligned with the primary structure. So while it sounds like our hands are tied on the access and, you know, I think it's the right thing to use the alley for your access and orient the garage in that direction, I would be inclined to, based on at least what I recall from that neighborhood and other accessory buildings, to allow the setback as proposed. And again, it's, you know, just a reminder to the commission, it's not an exception to the code. We're not varying from the code, we're just determining the setback.
Yeah, I agree with that. I I wasn't, when I made my statement before, I wasn't thinking about the the other condition that they were, the staff was still requiring a 20-foot setback. Because I think when you look at the the footprint, the set plan here is a little bit, it's easy to miss, at least I think I may have, that the porch is closer to 15th Street. And so you, I mean, you can come up at least that far and it would still appear in line. It doesn't need to be pushed back, in my mind, as far as the the rest of the house in order to to appear to be in line. I don't know where that line is exactly, if you brought it up to the porch, but it's probably closer to 10 feet than it is to 20.
What's it currently showing? What's the setback?
10 feet.
10 feet.
What is shown right now is 10 feet?
So what they're proposing?
That's correct, 10.
Okay. Well, then, in that case, yeah, 10 seems, 10 seems fine to me. It's with even setback a little further, kind of splitting the.
Any other discussion? Anyone prepared to propose motion?
I just want to ask staff one thing. I mean, you know, I made a statement about the rest of the neighborhood versus the one outbuilding across the street. Would that be inaccurate to state that there are examples of historic outbuildings that are, that would not be inaccurate?
That is not inaccurate.
So there there are examples of historic outbuildings that essentially match the setback of the primary dwelling?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll make the motion to approve staff recommendation, including all conditions except allowing or determining that the proposed 10-foot setback is consistent with other accessory dwellings in, or accessory buildings in the in the neighborhood.
Is that clear to you all? Okay. All right. So we have, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Opposed?
1114 Calvin is an application to construct a duplex infill on a vacant lot at the corner of Calvin Avenue and North 12th Street. This morning, the applicant submitted drawings that meet most of the staff's conditions, particularly those regarding breaking up the 12th Street facade, reassessing the dormers, and ensuring the front porches are at least six feet deep. The redesign keeps the structure at 35 feet, so even though the original documentation talks about a setback determination, they do not need one with the drawings that they submitted this afternoon or this morning. So here is, they did submit a revised site plan, but that came just before the meeting, so I didn't have a chance to put the site plan in the presentation, but I have a print out of it.
out of it if someone's interested in seeing that. And here are the two side facades. So the top image is the 12th Street facade, so that one will be highly visible. The staff had asked that they break up that facade more. They've broken up the dormers, and they've kind of done a couple of incents at a bay to kind of make, give a little bit of variety on that long facade that faces 12th Street and will be highly visible. The lower image is the right facade, that's interior lotline facade, and we didn't ask them to break that up, up that facade, because it's, won't be as visible. And here are some context photos. I'd like to note that the commission received some comments from neighbors on this project, and I believe there are some neighbors here who'd like to speak about it. But in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the staff recommendations. And again, the applicant has incorporated, I think, most of those staff recommendations. So everybody happy to answer any questions? If anybody has any...
Questions of staff?
I have one question.
Sure.
When we talk about setbacks, you know, we think we know where the property line is, but it's not always entirely clear. Was there a survey with this one?
Let me just pull up what they... While she's doing that, there is no requirement for an official survey. We recommend it, because you don't want to start construction and find out something later. But Metro does not require an official survey. The original site plan they submitted for the deadline didn't, wasn't a professional survey. This does seem to be, it was done by a surveyor. It doesn't seem to be stamped, but it seems to be somewhat, I don't know if it's, I have no idea if it's accurate or not, but it seems to be a professional survey.
I'll only ask, because it's, it looks really, looks like a really small area to get this into. And then, so when I was looking at this before the meeting, I went to the Metro GIS site, which, you know, you don't take. You can't trust it. It's perfectly accurate. But on this street, the other, the other house is sitting well into this lot, and there's an old lotline, and it looks like something where there might not really be a 50-foot lot. I just want to make sure somebody got a survey, because it looks like it could be...
I think Metro Maps does show it as a 50-foot wide lot. I think the drawing, you're right, the houses are skewed, but that's pretty common on Metro Maps. And the survey does show a 50-foot wide lot, so...
Okay. And so if you've got a, you've got your lot, and say this house to the west is built right to your property lines, one or two feet off, how do we work that in usually to rhythm and spacing? It's not exactly a race to the sideline, but in some ways it kind of is.
Typically, I mean, we look at the context, and, you know, we would always require the five-foot setback. I mean, in certain situations, we've asked houses to be more than five feet from the property line. In this case, we're not, because, because they're on a corner lot, they have to be 10 feet from the 12th Street property line and then five feet from the interior property line, which makes for a 35-foot wide lot, which is, or wide building, which is fairly narrow. And, you know, I think any narrow would be narrower than most of the houses, so we didn't ask for them. It does look like from this property, though, that they gave us, that the house next door may be closer to, than five feet to the property line, according to the survey. So, but we, but we're not asking for it to be any further than five feet.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. I'll open this. You come forward, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Kenneth Scherzer, and I live across the street. I'm also here with people who will be next door to it. We're generally supportive of the recommendations of staff. Our concern is the massing of a duplex on that property, so that in particular, when it comes to height and scale, if the foundation line is, there's been a lot of abuse, we've noticed, in other buildings in our, in Lachlan Springs, where foundation lines have turned out to be higher. And that means that the overall size of the structure is not in proportion to the surrounding structures. I know that the staff is calling for that to be monitored, and we're fully supportive of that, to make sure that it remains within, within that perspective. It is next to several 1930s vernacular infill that are masonry. There is a sort of sightline of other corresponding structures. This is something probably that would be more consistent on Eastland than it might be on Calvin, but in any case, given the sort of new vernacular, that it fits in, there's, being a corner lot as well, the massing, even with a 10-foot setback, a long 12th raises certain issues, because it almost creates a corridor with what used to be a tree-lined space, a street. But if that is kept in with perspective, as a neighbor and someone who will be looking at it quite frequently, I think the recommendations of the concerns of staff, the adding of the dormer break, all of those are positive things for us in the neighborhood.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Is the applicant here? Okay. All right. Okay. If there's no one else, I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion.
Well, with the comment or the issue of foundation hikes, we've, the past couple of months, the past couple of meetings, this has come up two or three times, I think. And I recall, we made someone move a foundation a few months ago that went out and tried to apologize after the fact.
This comes up very, very frequently during construction for various reasons. Sometimes they forgot to take into account the depth of the floor. Sometimes they assumed it was on a flat lot, and there's a grade, and that pushes it up. So it's something we just have to, we do the best we can during inspections to catch it soon enough that we can get them to remove enough blocks to meet the, what was approved.
Okay. And I think last month, we, we pretty much decided that our current way of accomplishing this is about the only way. Okay. I'm still baffled by the fact that someone would go build a structure and not know if their lot was flat or not. As a landscape architect, that's pretty much what we figure out on day one. So with the gentleman's concerns, I agree with staff, and I guess the height of the foundation, as it would correlate to the height of the house, is just going to have to be monitored in the field, and if it's done wrong, it has to be redone, right? Okay.
Robin, so with all these conditions, that recommendation from staff, in discussions with the applicant, they are agreeable to these specifications and conditions?
Yes, they have agreed. I think the only, the only condition which doesn't seem to reflect in the plans is the width of the driveway. I didn't have a chance to speak to them about that, but everything else, they've agreed to and have incorporated into the drawings.
Okay, so say that again about the driveway?
The width of the, we asked that the width of the driveway be...
Oh, be 12 foot.
Be 12 feet, and it looked like on the site plan, it's wider than that. Again, I got the site plan not long before leaving for here, so that's the one condition that still needs to be worked out.
Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa, I think one of the more important conditions here is number two, that that, that the side facades be broken up, because they're just so long. What, so you've seen what the solution to that is?
Actually, what's shown on the screen right now is the solution, so...
Oh, I see.
Originally, they didn't have the bay. They did have the dormers broken up, but they did incorporate a bay, which is something we asked them to do. There's a slight inset kind of underneath a central dormer, and then it kind of comes back out to a bay, kind of goes back in. And so we felt that that was sufficient for breaking up that long side facade. Again, we only asked them to do that on the 12th Street facade, because that's the facade that'll be highly visible.
And you have reached a certain resolution to that issue?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So to be clear, the drawings that are being shown right now are, are the drawings, they're most recent round of drawings.
Yes, I really appreciate staff's diligence on this, and, because this is a, I know this, I've been down this street, and it's a very pleasant street with a very specific rhythm to it. And so I think this is one of those neighborhoods where you really want to preserve that, and I appreciate staff looking at it, and I think it's, these conditions are good.
I just have a couple of questions and comments. I'm always suspicious when the drawings just have flat grade across, which just makes you wonder where the foundation really will end up being. I mean, do we, we don't require them to, at least without a survey, try to attempt to illustrate the grade change across the foundation?
That is exactly the reason we added that standard condition in, that you've been seeing over and over and over again, that it needs to match the floor level of the buildings, historic buildings around it, to take care of that issue.
Okay.
To help try to take care of that issue.
Okay. And this may be semantics, but that condition that we see regularly, when we say "match", is that what it says? Finish floor should, shall be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. We're talking about relative to grade. We're not saying that, because if the, if the lots, or if it's going up a hill, you just want a similar porch height and foundation height?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is on the front elevation. Maybe you could pull that up on the screen. Are the, are the stone piers on the corners, is that the corner of the house, or is that a port, there's not a porch that goes all the way across, is there? It seems, just seemed like an unusual detail.
There are two separate porches. They're in different planes. See if I can pull up the, oh, I don't know if I included, I'm sorry, I didn't include the floor plan in the presentation. You can kind of see it, you can kind of see it on the, in the drawings here. That's the front. So there's, the porches are in two different planes, so there are two separate porches for each one, for each unit.
Gotcha.
Page 13.
I'll move with approved staff recommendation and all conditions.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Okay. It's on the western edge of the Lachlan Springs overlay, and it is currently a vacant lot. There had been a house on the lot a long time ago, but between 1957 and 1960, it was demolished, replaced with a concrete block commercial building. Since that time, much of the surrounding area transitioned to being commercial as well, almost as an extension of the Five Points Woodland Street area, Woodland Street, Five Points commercial area. That concrete block has since been demolished, and now the lot being vacant, the applicant proposes to develop it with three new buildings. They will be for office use, but the front facades will have a scale and window pattern compatible with that of surrounding traditional commercial building, which include one of the old HD Hill grocery stores. You might have, you might be familiar with that brick. That's a one-story commercial building. The proposed new buildings will be two stories. And I guess I've gone into detail on the published staff recommendation, which you have, so I won't repeat that, but just give a few highlights. Sorry, three buildings here. Didn't know I'd animated that slide. Staff recommends approval with three conditions. One was increasing, or is increasing, the street setbacks, and the applicant has submitted a revised site plan that addresses that concern. Two, the second condition, is the elimination of a proposed bridge that connects Buildings A and B, and the applicant will want to speak to the commission regarding the nature and necessity of the bridge. And the third condition is a, the standard requirement that all finished materials are approved by staff, and I don't believe the applicant has any objection to that condition. So in summary, staff recommends approval of the proposed infill development with the conditions that the site plan has the revised setbacks, that the elevated bridge between the two Fatherland Street buildings, Buildings A and B, be eliminated, and that material and design of parking lot pavers, walkways, fences, dumpster enclosure, and finished materials are approved by staff.
Any questions you have of the staff? Okay. I'll open the public hearing and ask you to come forward and give your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Mark Sanders, the developer of Martin Corner in the Five Points area, 129 South 11th Street, Nashville. This site that we have is a, is a long, narrow site. It's the last of our phase of the Martin Corner, and I've left it the last because of some of the conditions, because it is long and narrow. So we've worked with Historic and with MDHA and zoning, because we're in a redevelopment district, urban overlay and the historic overlay. So we've worked with them to push the buildings up to the street and have the 10-foot setbacks on the curbs in the front and the, all the zoning issues. So we came down to the last thing, which is the bridge, and that's, that's why we're here to, we're talking today. Because of all the massing towards the front, we, the, the two buildings facing Fatherland are two, are not wide enough to have two ingress egresses going up to the second floor. And what the fire marshal recommended was having a, basically a steel bridge that connects the two buildings. It's pretty nondescript. There's no bracing holding it up. It's just going between the two buildings. And then we're going to have a, our landscape plan, I don't know if that made it in, but there's a tree on Fatherland that kind of, you can't see the bridge from the street. This is strictly a life safety issue, trying to provide access so that fire escape to get out of the top floor of those two buildings. That's all I have.
Any more questions of the applicant?
One quick one. So the, your reasoning for the bridge is you don't have ingress and egress on the second floor?
Correct. Two, two means of ingress egress. We have one.
Okay.
The width of the building is not long enough to have two sets of stairs.
Okay. But you could, you could achieve it on the first floor, but now, since it's the second floor, you're talking about a fire escape?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the way they calculate the run.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions?
And the drawing we provided shows, that's the elevation of what, that staff did not have that at the time, so we were providing that. So the drawing shows that bridge between them.
All right. Thank you.
Would you like to come up and address us? Yeah, I'm the general contractor, and I've had some communication with the fire marshal. So if you have any questions, we'll be, we'll have to respond.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Discussion?
Just have a question. How far back the bridge is from the front facade? Is it along, essentially along the back edge? It appears maybe in this elevation. Is that...
The stairways are enclosed in the back, so this is at the back of the building.
Correct. Yeah.
That's the revised site plan I mentioned in my presentation. You can see the bridge is in the, the back quarter, third of the, between Buildings A and B, essentially where the number six is written, handwritten there. That was a note describing the distance between the buildings, but it's also the location of the bridge.
Well, I know we've had other bridge proposals, crossing alleys, some of which we've approved, others on single-family homes, which I don't think we have approved, or we've turned those down. This seems like a, sort of a technicality in a way. Again, it's not along the street front, and I understand why staff's recommending, I guess, removal of the bridge, or disapproving the bridge, or... But it's, you know, this is, this whole area and this whole development and corner has been a big part of East Nashville's success, and, and really is a, some of the structures that have been built over there have been sort of refreshing from, you know, in terms of a pretty innovative approach to architecture and small pop-up type retail in the area. And so continuing that on this site, you can see that in the distance there, continuing on that on this site makes a lot of sense, and, you know, having the opportunity to put even a second story on, on these small structures, I think, is, is a great idea and creates more diversity among that, that whole development. more diversity among that whole development. So while there's not a precedent to connect historic buildings, you know, with a bridge between, I think in this application and for life safety purposes, I don't have a problem with it.
I see a very apparent hardship here for this bridge to be approved. I remember the one, the residential building, that was just a fancy toy in that case. But this is ingress and egress, and it has to do with human life. So the way that this is done and the reason for doing it, I agree with Hunter. I think it's all right.
Now, I worry some about setting a bad precedent, but it seems to me the only other solution I could come up with is that Buildings A and B are one building. And that, I think the massing works a lot better this way, and that-
Fire marshal probably would call it one building.
Maybe that is exactly what they're doing, is calling it one building by doing this.
But as I understand it, well, we suggested that to them, and the applicant told me that the combination of those two buildings, or the addition of their square footage together kicks it into a zone where sprinklers are required and different, two buildings have requirements that are easier to meet than one large building.
But what I'm trying to get at is, I think, you know, that one big building, sprinklers and all of that aside, cost issues aside, one big building, I think, would not quite have the right rhythm for this area, and two buildings with, you know, the third around the corner, I think it's going to work a lot better, and given that the connection is all the way in the rear, and it is a life safety issue and not a cool way to access your garage on the second floor from your bedroom. I think we can distinguish it from a number of other applications where that's been proposed.
Would you like to put that in a motion?
Well, can I have the, sorry. I'm not sure the way I expressed it was exactly tied to the guidelines, so I want to be careful. I will make a motion to recommend, based on staff's approval, with the exception that the applicant is not required to eliminate the elevated bridge, based on the fact that I think under subsection 2B3, we actually end up with a better rhythm and spacing on the street by allowing it to remain two separate buildings, and that I don't think it's visually incompatible or contrasting greatly with the immediate area because it is all the way in the rear, and it's a relatively narrow distance between the two buildings. It won't be conspicuous.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No.
305 Scott Avenue is an application for construction of a single-family residence on this vacant lot. The commission approved a two-family building that was presented last month. The adjacent houses were not included on the site plan, so staff requests as a condition of approval to verify the setback from Scott Avenue relative to the context. The proposed new construction meets the rest of the relevant design guidelines. Staff has recommended that the horizontal window on each side elevation, kind of outlined in red there, be replaced with more vertically proportioned ones. And I think the applicant would like to address the commission on that one. With the additional conditions that staff verify the finished floor height and approve windows, doors, color of roofing, staff finds that the application meets the desired guidelines for the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
Any questions of staff? All right, I'll open it-
I just have one question, not related so much to this application, but is this the first time you've seen someone have a duplex approved and come back for single-family? It's unusual.
It's refreshing.
It's interesting.
Hi, my name is John Root, you know, architect for the project. This should be a very simple one for you. It's my understanding that horizontal transom windows are usually okay past the midpoint of the house, and actually, one of those horizontal windows is 16 feet off the corner, if you look at the plan sheet. We just assume delete the transom windows if we can't replace them because they're in areas of the house, like closets and showers and that kind of thing. So that would be my only comment. The picture on the bottom right is a shower, and again, it's past the midpoint of the house, towards the rear of the house. And the other one is, the elevation at the top left is the elevation 16 feet back off that side elevation, so it's never going to be seen from the front of the house. Thank you.
Any questions? John? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open it for discussion.
So, Robin, what, where's our hiccup with the front setback?
I can answer that.
Yes, please.
It may be in line with that that's currently established, but the site plan didn't show the adjacent buildings, so I couldn't verify it. So it's in there just to make sure that it's there.
I understand. Thank you, Paul. Could staff remind us, and maybe Paul, you said this specifically, with regard to horizontal windows, what the guidelines say, what practices we've put in place before? And there are some exceptions to that even on historic structures. My house has one. It's tucked up under the porch, and it has a decorative window in it. So, you know, there may be sort of those few exceptions in special places where horizontal windows were historically used, but I'd be interested in hearing staff's perspective on it.
The guidelines require that the windows have the same proportion as historic windows, and for a while there, we were getting quite a number of requests for these scattered all over side elevations and even front elevations sometimes. So it came down to, when are they okay, when are they not okay? It was our understanding, three or four months ago, that you decided to just quit allowing them on the side elevation, and everybody's clear when they're allowed or not. They're allowed on the back, but not the sides. So that's where we were headed with that.
Okay. I don't particularly remember that, but I've missed a couple of meetings over the last few months, so, yeah. I think there's-
September.
September. I guess, you know, there seem, you know, if you sort of take a common sense approach, Rose, which is often what you say here, I think the intent of the guidelines certainly is that generally, the majority of the windows, you know, the pattern of the windows, the, you know, your standard windows that serve your normally functioning rooms are vertically oriented and are vertically proportioned. And that's what you see in historic homes, but then you also do see some exceptions here and there, and, you know, you know, I tend, usually when it's past halfway, you know, down the side facade, I have less concern than things that are closer to the front or certainly on the front facade, especially the one that's recessed beyond the side facade so far that you'd never see it. I'd be inclined to allow that one. I'd like to hear what the other commissioners have to say about the one on the lower facade there.
I'm definitely in agreement that the one that's recessed and all the way in the rear is a non-issue. And I, look, I don't remember, but I was at the September meeting, so I may have voted for that and not understood what I was voting for, because I wouldn't want a hard and fast rule, because I think there are practical concerns like bathrooms where it just makes a lot of sense, and if it's all the way at the rear, can't be seen from the street. I'm not sure why we care. The other one at the bottom is a little bit different, and I'm not saying the midpoint is a hard and fast rule, but it seems like a good place to start looking at it, and whether you would perceive it from the street. It's, to me, it's whether you would perceive it from the street, where is it in relation to the midpoint of the house? And of the number of windows on that level of that house, is it a significant minority? And I think it, if I'm making up a rule on the spot, it would look something like that. And this seems to satisfy, the bottom one seems to satisfy that as well. So it seems to be generally consistent with not, it's not contrasting greatly, is what I'm getting at.
Also another, is that it's not a corner house either, so you're not going to see that, because visibly-
That's another relevant factor, for sure.
I do think that, you know, where you do see horizontal windows in, I think, shed dormers, sometimes they're broken up into, you know, multiple windows potentially, sometimes under porches in special places. They're generally, historically, not just a window on kind of a side facade. So, I mean, this, you know, and I agree with all the comments, and am less, perhaps, you know, less sensitive to these kind of things than others sometimes, but just historically, you know, if, you know, if this were a special condition, or a highlighted window, or something that, you know, it might begin to fall into what we would see historically or relate to, sort of historic precedents, but I just thought I'd add that.
Any other comments, or do I hear a motion? This is the last one. This is more discussion.
I had the whole stack, but I didn't have this one. Seen it for the first time here. But I am hearing everybody's comments, and I agree with them. With regard to the application at 305 Scott Avenue, I recommend approval of the application subject to the conditions recommended by the staff, with exception of the condition, well, I lost it, to, that the horizontal windows on each side elevation be as drawn and proposed by the applicant.
My second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. This one. Okay, we have no preliminary, no administrative actions. Any other business?
Just one little piece of information to tell you about. Next weekend is the Tennessee Preservation Trust statewide conference in Chattanooga, so it's not that far. If you're interested, you can look that up on their website, tennesseypreservationtrust.org, and sign up and come down.
When is it?
Next weekend.
Pardon? Who all is going for my staff?
The director is going, I'm going, and Tara Milnick is going. There may be others, but at least the three of us will be there.
All right.
We're also presenting another Realtor course as a part of that.
Oh, wow. Okay. All right. This coming weekend?
No, after that. Yeah.
Some people say that. If there's no other business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.